Good evening one and all. I hope all of you had a fantastic day and our reach out for today's session. I request you all to raise for Tamil thaivarthu. Thank you everyone, please be seated. I, Vascha Ramakrishnan, on behalf of the Institute of Internal Auditors Madras Chapter Women's Forum, welcome you all to the session on today's topic, "Learning to Think After Chat GPT." And now welcome, Mr. Ravi Veera Ragavan, President Madras Chapter to deliver the welcome address.
Thank you Vassha. So, welcome gentlemen, gentlewomen to the IA Women's Chapter event. IA Madras Chapter event, but then this is an exclusive Women's Forum. All the panelists you will see today will be late. Unfortunately, I am the wrong person here. I have Uma Madam who will be talking also on behalf of the National Chapter. So, this event has been organized after a long time, even though we had a national conference. I think most of you would have attended the national conference, a very big success. We had it in, we had it in Adia Park and then it was very well attended. And we had various speakers, multi-layered channels, speakers and, and the importance of some of these events is we impart a lot of things to the audience, but then it's a membership reach-out event as well. So, very critical that a lot of knowledge passes back and a lot of interaction happens. And whenever I meet some of the people in this event, it's very interactive and I get to know new things as well. And the customer experience, I keep calling which I have a lot of BOG members like Mr. Ram Kumar Zondias and Uma is there. This is a very interesting customer experience and thanks Suresh Kumar sir from Indian Bank. He's come all the way after his IOD meeting to attend this event. And I have other guests as well. I have Senior BOG Krishna is there on somewhere around and other Padmanav Krishna sir. One of these event activities, I just have to put some introduction here is to this forum or IA India, then IA Madras Chapter and we have chapters in Bangalore, Hyderabad, Delhi and Calcutta and Bombay as well. So, there are a lot of activities go on. Main purpose of IA itself is to impart education and there's an important element called certification. And certification is very, very critical because we take it as more of a learning. And today's topic interestingly is chat GPT, which is the hot topic today. Welcome Hareka Madam, Kavita Madam and Shobana Madam from various industries. They will be here to present on the panel. It will be chaired by Deepika, who is also eminent institute speaker. And this topic we picked up because there's so much hot things talked about this, the good of this, the bad of this. So, advantages of this, everyday and AI, which I put some topics here, artificial intelligence, which drives some of these things is very, very important to know. And it will be an hour and a half panel, open to thing. It's going live, so any questions, keep it very mild, it's keep it out of politics here because this going live recording. It's going on Zoom to various other channels as well. So, thanks once again and something about the IA Chapter itself, Madras Chapter. One or two things we have done this year. We've signed MOU with the Tamil Nadu Skill Council, which is part of the Non-Modal One Scheme of the Chief Minister. We had this inauguration November twenty-third event. And one main purpose of this event is to reach out to the government colleges. I have somebody from the Skill Council, Mr. Ram Kumar is there and then I have KRC also on the panel. They have, we have done some work with them, we have reached out to some of those colleges, quite a few colleges we reached out. We've done a lot of career counseling for some of these colleges exclusively, lot of women colleges, men colleges also we went, but this again from tier two, tier three, where a lot of exposure doesn't happen. So, it's a very important event for us and from my institution where I come from, also we have done a lot of backing. So, we are exclusively trying to work with the government to employ more and more of these candidates. And I visited most of these colleges. It's interesting, they are very, very well equipped. Only thing the exposure doesn't happen. It's very important for us to reach out to them, take it forward, work with them and we're starting to do the recruitment as well. So, actually we have so many memberships, corporate members is part of this IA Chapter. So, one of the main things is to reach out to them as well. From the industry, it's very critical, they participate in these programs. So, we're launching a portal shortly, IA Chapter along with the Skill Council also. There's a portal where all the candidates, shortlisted candidates will be screened, put up for recruitment. We're starting on BCOM and the commerce fintech specifically and then we spread it. So, very important for us to take it from there. And secondly, on the certification programs, we have a CIA certification program. So, we have a desk right there where it's represented from a CIA perspective, there in registration etc. It's a very important program for us because it's a three, three, three paper course now because of a single certification. Other things you can do it with one paper. So, another thing we need to do this. And coming from Chennai, Chennai Academy, Chennai Super Kings, so I wish them all the best for the finals on Monday, Sunday. And I have somebody from the company itself, Chennai Super Kings was sponsor, I have Ramna from India Simmons as well. So, a lot of support coming from Chennai Super Kings, they were one of our sponsors for this national event as well. So, very important, sponsorships are very important for us because it goes back to education, goes back to training and we're going to fund a lot of these college activities. Some of the colleges we might be adopting as well to take it forward. So, some of these things which happen and any questions, there are enough BOG members Krishna is here, Ram Kumar sir is here. I have Uma Madam, I have Deepika Madam and then some of the other forums. If I miss any names, feel reach out to us and thanks once again. Feel happy to participate in events, it's a panel session and then all the questions leave it to them because it's a very interesting topic, unknown topic for most of us. Again, I have to start learning quite a few things. I was generating a lot of information yesterday, but looks like it's a heavy duty topic. Thanks once again and over to Vassha.
Thank you for the warm words of welcome sir. I now request Mrs. Uma Prakash, President IA India to present, to talk about IA.
Thank you Vassha. Good evening to everyone. Before I start, I would like to ask one question. How many of you are the first timers to this conference? Yeah, to an IA program. So hardly three or four. Okay, fine. So, I won't take too much time because I've been talking this for the last twenty years about IA. So, that is what I've been telling and the last two years I've been really talking about this in all the six chapters continuously. So, twelve months into two chapters, how did I've been talking about this? So, I thought I'll just probably quickly give you a glimpse of this. We have around one hundred and eighty-five thousand members all over the world and in around one hundred and seventy-five countries. And India is also one of the affiliates of the Global Institute, which is the Institute of Internal Auditors, which is headquartered at Florida. And in India, we have six chapters in all the metros, of course you know those places. And all of us are very active, all the chapters are very, very active in organizing conferences, webinars and workshops. And then we have started seriously with trainings also with lot of corporates. Recently, the additions that we have is the Co-Tech, LIC, they are all our corporate members for whom we are imparting training courses across all over India. And now the next agenda, as Ravi was telling, we want to penetrate into the student community, which is what we are now focusing on. So, I have got another four to five months of period to complete. So, I think by the time my term ends over, me and Ravi's target is to get into the student community and bring awareness and advocacy about this internal audit course today. Because it's not, the internal audit course is not like the earlier times when we were all enrolling ourselves into this. Now, it is gaining lot of importance and lot of opportunities are there for the internal auditors. They are no more the watchdogs, they are not called the watchdogs of the company. They are the value adds for the company these days. So, people at the top management look upon the internal auditors for their advice and guidance to grow in an organization. So, and another factor even for the Women's Forum, I would like to just probably talk for one minute. We found the Women's Forum in December nineteen, twenty nineteen and we had around probably thirty, forty members totally. So, you can imagine that is why it has taken, Chennai was, the chapter was founded in nineteen forty-seven and it has taken more than sixteen years to have a woman president at the all India level. So, that shows the, no, no, it's not a thing to be glad, that shows that how much we women will have to fight for our empowerment. You know, that's a message I want to give in this forum, want to utilize this forum because this has been organized by the Women's Forum. And in Chennai, of course, Deepika and her team is doing an amazing job. And across all the six chapters, we have the Women's Forum doing various good jobs in all the chapters. And since this being an awareness month for the global IA, all the Women's Forum also are doing awareness program. And this is one of the IA awareness programs that we are organizing, part of that May month schedule. So, what I would like to say is today the women members are around more than thousand members in our forum. From twenty-five to thirty, we have no reached a member of thousand. But again, it's not a matter of pride for me. I would like more women to get enrolled into IA. Not just as an IA member, qualify yourself as a CIA. Earlier CIA was not that much of a recognized course, but now it's not like that. Most of the big fours are even, you know, awarding you additional weightage for your incentive, for your promotion and other activities if you are a qualified CIA. Most of the back office, you know, where there is an internal control operations or in a big way, they are also recognizing this CIA qualification as a much added advantage. So, I want all of you to make use of this and I think Nikita is going to come and talk to you about the courses and certifications that are offered by the IA Global, which would be a more of matter of material information for you rather than me just talking about IA. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you Chennai Chapter for giving me this opportunity. I owe a lot to the Chennai Chapter who have made me come up to this position today at the all India level. Thank you once again.
Thank you ma'am for beautifully outlining the milestone of IA and the activities carried out by them. I now request Ms. Nikita Prakash, Counselor IA Certification, to talk about IA and CIA certifications.
So, good evening all of you. So, I thought I'd briefly take you through all the certifications which has been provided by the IA. So, first being the IAP, which is the Internal Audit Practitioner, as you can also see it in the backdrop. So, it's mostly to all the new beginners and university students. So, no more IA is only for people who are working, even university students can take it up. The small membership fee which you will have to pay and then get yourself enrolled. So, any students who would be liking to take up a career in the field of internal audit can definitely take this up. For the matter of CIA, as ma'am told about the various opportunities, job opportunities. It's a three paper course, so you have part one, part two and part three. Briefing broadly on your risk control, on how an internal audit engagement is planned and executed, till the business acumen, which is the third part. So, anyone who's already in the field of internal audit can take this up. You just have to have an undergraduate and a few years of experience. You can go into the CCMS, which is the Candidate Central Management System and get yourself enrolled. And it's very easy, it has a very good UI, so it'll be easy for you to pay your fees and get started with your CIA journey. And the third thing being CRMAs, so for the CRMAs you will have to be a CIA. So, I would rather tell anybody who's already done your CIA to consider CRMAs as a certification. It's just a one paper course, which you can again enroll yourself, show your CIA credentials and get yourself enrolled for the CRMAs. This month being the advocacy month, IA India is actually providing a small discount on the tariff. So, if you're planning to take up your exams anytime, anytime soon from now, you can register yourself now so that you get that small discount on the tariff. And if there is anything in specific you would like to know, you can always mail it to us or you can also connect to us through the counseling desk which is just behind you. Thank you.
Thank you Nikita for the insights. I now invite Deepika, Chairperson Women's Forum and Treasurer IA Madras, to introduce the panelists.
Hello everyone. Very happy to be part of this forum and today I have the privilege of moderating the panel. So, first I introduced our panelist. So, our eminent panelist for today are first Ms. NS Shobana, Executive Director Tech Solutions Limited. She is the Executive Director at Tech Solutions Limited. She brings over decade of professional experience to the table and expertise lies in contact negotiations, ERP mergers and various other skills. She is a proud member of Institute of Chartered Accountants of India. Throughout her career, she has garnered four endorsements from her colleagues at Tech Solutions, which speaks volume about her work ethic and capabilities. She takes great pride in her ability to navigate complex negotiations and create situations for all parties involved. Ma'am, I welcome you to the dais. We are looking forward to hear more from you today. So, next I invite CA Rekha Uma Shiv. She is a partner from SC Pillai and Co. She is an engineer turned chartered accountant with a demonstrated history of working in information technology sector and accounting industry. She has corporate experience in working with O-labs, databases, data, warehousing tools, ETL tools. She has built a very strong accounting and professional practice areas. So, currently she is handling subjects of auditing and taxation in Institute of Chartered Accountants of India, Institute of Cost and Management Accountants of India and Institute of Company Secretaries of India. Welcome you ma'am, please join us in the dais. So, next I introduce Ms. Kavita Yipin, Global Head CGA Aspire Systems Private Limited. She is an audit professional with more than twenty years of experience in compliance checks and audit for information security management systems, quality management systems and privacy management systems at the global level. She is the global head for compliance governance and the audit. She is passionate about delivering result-oriented leadership that aligns with compliance and governance initiatives. She has held important positions in multinationals like Cognizant, Ramco Systems, ProDapp in information security and quality prior to Aspire. She is a qualified lead auditor in many quality and information system standards with six X mark black belt. She also did a brief stint at Associate Professor in SSN Engineering College. Passion towards training and learning has always been a top priority as a result. She is currently pursuing a research in cloud security and AI at Hindustan University. So, I welcome you ma'am and please join us in the dais. So, today's topic for our panel discussion is "Learning to Think After Chat GPT." So, all of us would have downloaded OpenAI, tried typing something, we got right answers, we didn't get right answers. We would have used something in our professional practice. So, it's some sort of very, very interesting tool to know about and read further. So, today we have very, very eminent people who are actually hands-on on using this tool and who have already implemented this tool in their organizations. So, I had a very, very interesting opportunity to discuss all these topics with them prior to this panel discussion that which we are showcasing to you today. So, in no particular order, first I'm going to throw my question to Ms. Rekha. So, since she is in the practice area and most of our audience here are also representing internal audit fraternity. How do you think ma'am that auditors can use this chat GPT in their professional work?
Very good evening to one and all. So, I think first I have to thank IA for giving me this wonderful opportunity. I think I have been always on the other side as an audience and I think it's a great honor to be here and to be, I mean, with all the eminent personalities who are here. So, I think this is one topic that is like currently trending in the Twitter word, if you say it is a trending topic. So, and whenever people see chat GPT, okay, this is not my domain, I have to get away from that. That is the first reaction that comes to everyone. So, if you see for professionals, I think I have started using chat GPT in my day-to-day work. I don't know how many of you have actually started using that. But trust me, this is one area which actually minimizes your work like ten, twenty, thirty times. So, any, any point of work, it is not just as an auditor. Say for example, I want to, I would take a rather not a professional example, just I'll just take a LinkedIn example. So, I just had my LinkedIn ID and I copied the LinkedIn ID and then I used in the chat GPT. I said, hey chat GPT, this is my LinkedIn ID. So, just suggest me a few things, how I could improve my profile? How I could get more employers visiting my profile? So, this is one area which I thought, okay, this is not going to give me because when I tried the same with Facebook, so I always prioritize on campaigns. So, when I tried my Facebook ID and then gave it to chat GPT telling, okay, I want to see who are the top ten valvishers in my Facebook. It gave me an answer like, sorry, this is not legal, I'm not supposed to do it. So, this is out of my purview, so I apologize and I'm not into anything that is very personal. So, I thought, okay, the same will be given for LinkedIn too and I was very happy and I gave my LinkedIn ID and was waiting for the reply. So, the moment I gave my LinkedIn ID, I was actually quite surprised. It gave me a full-fledged profile introduction, which I can just directly copy, paste and use in my profile. So, I was just thinking, okay, I'm a, whatever is the qualification that I have put my in LinkedIn, everything was synthesized and that profile which it gave me was hundred times better than one if I could have written. So, I think trust me, that is one wonderful use that I had seen. Then I thought maybe not going more into auditing, something I'll start little funny. Then I thought, okay, I want to write a sick leave and that too professionally. I don't want to ask them like I want to get a single day leave because I have a headache. I want to write a sick leave very professionally. Trust me, the sick leave that it gave was far, far, I have never seen such a sick leave. So, it is so good and then I thought, okay, then I'll explore other opportunities of chat GPT. I'll, I asked them like, I want to reject a work or say no to my boss without disappointing him, that too professionally. So, I gave him prompts. I didn't say just I want to say no, but I gave certain instincts to the chat GPT. Like, I want to say no to the work that is allocated to me by my boss and that too in a very professional manner so that next time I won't be rejected for that particular work. All the pros I have just put and then I gave as a prompt. Rekha, was it also localized with an Indian context or something very US-centric going by? How does that work? I think the prompts that I gave was like more of like, oh, I know Indian context, I can say in Indian context, but trust me, I can use it anywhere. So, the kind of reply it gives, I thought, okay, fine, I'm like going into the uses of chat GPT, which nobody will ever try in the first game. So, people normally go for, okay, maybe instead of a Google, they will try a prompt. So, and then I tried, okay, about the two thousand rupee withdrawal. So, two days back I was in Kundur and I had like one of the TV channels that came and asked, they wanted an interview from the CIA Institute, like what is your take on this two thousand rupee note withdrawal? Then I have given my some comments, then I thought, okay, maybe I should give an article also on that. Then I asked chat GPT, okay, just give me an article on two thousand rupee note withdrawal. And then I thought I have to have a very strong language, maybe as written by Shashit Aru. So, and trust me, I got an article which I didn't understand end to end. It showed me like, it started with like demonetization disaster, yes, that is what I wanted. Nobody should understand what I'm writing. And then slowly it came with each and every points and I thought, yes, this article is so good. If I, if I put it, nobody will understand, but I'll get the credits for becoming a good writer. So, all these points we tried, but jokes apart, I went and did some real research into that. Say for example, in an audit, I wanted to create an SOP. So, if I Google the same, I'll get hundreds of site where I have to go dig into each and every site and then take the relevant content out of there and put it in a format. But I just, I wrote a prompt like I wanted a SOP for a stock audit. And trust me, it gave me such a beautiful list of SOPs and checklist and I can, maybe I'll give you an example on how it can be elaborated. Say with, this is one thing about chat GPT is it is not with respect to the command you give. How personalized a command you can give or how better the prompt you can give, the answer will be better. So, I think that's few areas which I tried, it is not too professional, but I, I'm sure maybe after ma'am discuss, I can give you more professional example, especially with respect to internal auditing.
Yes, yes, sure. So, ma'am, Kavita, the question is for you. So, let's say we are going to use in our professional practice, we are going to use as a risk advisor, as an internal auditor, we are giving a recommendation based on chat GPT or we are going to give an SOP based on chat GPT. What do you think is from a data privacy point of view and from an audit risk perspective, how we have to deal with this? Is there any preventive things that we have to keep in mind?
Yeah, fine. Very good, good evening and thanks to Ravi Karthik for inviting me for this, you know, program. And one more thing which I would like to say is that you introduced everyone as CA. So, I'm not a CA basically, so I have completed my engineering, masters in engineering and doing a PhD in engineering. So, I'm the odd man, odd women out in this thing. And sorry Ravi, I missed your February event, I was not in India. And so, when he said like it's a women forum that attracted me to come here. And the second point which I really loved is a chat GPT AI, which is a very, very trending topic. And I, I can see some of the old people over here because I also belong to that category, sir, madam. So, the very first thing, see, I, I joined as a lecturer in one of the college and the very first subject which was given to me was AI, artificial intelligence in two thousand one, right? So, artificial intelligence is not a very new topic, so it is a very old one and you can see in the prime video. So, the very first movie which I saw because I was totally clueless on what is this artificial intelligence? How come, how come a woman, I mean, machine can think like a human, right? That was a question which popped out in two thousand one, when I just completed my studies. And at that time even Google was not there much, YouTube was not there. And so, everything we had to take a printout of everything. I think the old category people who were from the eighties, of course they will understand before eighties. So, now everything has been moved into a greener way where we have Google, where we have this AI and all. So, that I saw that movie and I got to know that it is all based on the training, like a small kiddo, right? When, when the kiddo is born, the kiddo is being trained and then the kiddo makes a mistake, we just again train. And so, it is actually a pre-learned algorithm, where the child is born, something is there in the mind and then it goes on the supervisory learning, which is actually the AI now with the AML and then it goes for the reinforcement learning. So, learn, learn, learn and you then become a perfect. But definitely as humans are not perfect, AI is also not perfect, right? So, so, thanks to Rekha ma'am for giving such a beautiful, you know, the overview of how to use a chat GPT in doing lot of activities. When there is a pro, there is a con, right? And when there is, there is a con, there is a pro, even for the human beings. So, you know, when, so when this whole thing came into the picture, like this GPT, this open AI, right? I love these guys in two thousand fifteen when they started a, you know, AI Research Center in two thousand fifteen as a nonprofit organization and when the Microsoft also supported them, Infosys supported them. At that time we were just thinking that what is going to happen? And then in two thousand eighteen, they introduced GPT, right? So, they just took some market people into their strife, right? Sorry to say this ma'am, like you, me, everyone who wants some of the activities to be lower down because of so much of tensions and other things we have, right? That's a human nature. And then in two thousand nineteen, they released GPT two, then three, they released three, I mean, twenty twenty. Then the whole lockdown came. Twenty twenty-two was a perfect shot for them to introduce something which everyone will be tempted to use. And that's how the chat GPT came. Before the chat GPT itself, there were so many things which were actually, you know, circulating among the all the auditors, internal auditors, information security auditors and how to handle this here. Because chat GPT is not a new one, there are many other tools also like chat Sonic, Bab, NewBinge, all these things were there. And then the whole media, the whole, the whole world took to a surprise when they crossed one million users in just five days. And the Netflix took, Netflix, we all like Netflix like, it took two years for the people to actually cross the one million. And just like that, these guys have took and taken the five days to cross the one million. So, now the, when, when we are talking about the pros and the cons, now comes the, how to handle this, right? So, when, when the chat GPT came in, lot of incidents came into our organization, right? So, the information security team had a, you know, a tough time because everyone started uploading the codes. Everyone started uploading the codes and say that, hey, chat GPT, tell me how, is this code correct? Then I said, okay, let me also try. Then I typed the code and it gave all the answers along with the mistakes, right? And chat GPT is decent enough. It said that, hey, I have been learned to do all this one lead till September twenty twenty-one. Also, please make sure you do a research on your own and to whether you want to take it or not, it is up to you. A kind of a disclaimer, you come and join my team, but make sure that we are going to give you work. If you're okay, then it is okay. So, giving some, a thing on the table and then giving a disclaimer. So, the chat GPT is very kind enough to do that. Then I said, okay, give me a poem of this chat GPT, seriously, even you can type now. It gave a poem, duck, 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 then next para, duck, duck, duck. So, I was just thinking that really, it actually, the one good thing is that whenever the technology advances, we always have to accept that advance, but at the same time we have to also see the other point of it. Now, coming to the question of Deepika, the one thing which all of us said when the incidents started pouring in, people started uploading the confidential information, legal, I mean, legal team started uploading. people started uploading the confidential information, legal, I mean, legal teams started uploading the contracts and you know, the NSA, which is an admin team, started uploading the different aspects of the information security. Then the one thing which came out in the board meeting is that ban chat G P T in Aspire system. It's not possible, right? Anything which goes as an advancement, we cannot ban it because it has lot of good things which Rekha ma'am said. It, it actually gives you all the knowledge plus the mistakes, plus what do you infer from the knowledge that is being given. Then one thing from the information security aspect is that, first thing about the privacy and the data information security is that you being a human being, you should know the limit by which you have to actually insert the personal information or the sensitive information. So we always say, preach everyone that be cautious with your sensitive information, right? And when I say sensitive information, it can be your Aadhaar card, it can be your social security number because we do not know the retention policy or the privacy policy of whichever chat G P T or open A I tool that is going to be there. And the second thing as a information security professional that we recommend everyone is that, please go and see their retention policy. The retention policy is the amount of days that the person, whoever is going to give the data that is being, going to be stored in their database. Is it for one week, one day, ten days or whatever it is? And then go and see their privacy policy. After the invention of all these regulatory compliance, it has become a very mandate that you have to have a privacy policy for any providers who is going to give a service to the organizations or to the public. So go and see the privacy policy. The third thing is that do not use anything which is untrusted, mostly H T T P or which is an untrusted thing. So don't use that. And whenever there is a problem, please report it. In two thousand, before two thousand twenty, which is actually the, before the lockdown period, the incidents attacks were not this heavy. So now the government is also acting upon it and they say that when any such cyber attack or anything happens, please go and report to the government within twenty-four hours. So having taken all the steps and one more thing is that social engineering. When I say social engineering, you keep on educating your employees on what needs to be shared or what not, or not to be shared. So all these together, when you bring in to the table, then of course Deepika, you can use such a wonderful tool. Not only this, there are many more competitors. J B Morgan is actually investing on the open chat G P T way of taking their financial advisory. So there are lot of things which comes. And when you talk about the pros and cons, right? When you talk about the disadvantages, there are lot of advantages, some of which has already been told by Rekha, which we can continue also. So having said, taking all these measures in place, of course, you can handle such a great invention of human being, of being a human being, right?
Ma'am, any specific point from a chat G P T perspective, their privacy policy you would like to add, ma'am?
Yeah, see, their privacy policy, they say that they are not going to use this data for anything, but we really don't know. And we, I mean, they have released the G P T four-point series, four series and which is a paid version of twenty dollars per month. So the whatever has, is going inside the thing, which is not very clear. So maybe after four or five years, like as Mark Zuckerberg was being questioned by all the congressmen and congresswomen on using the, our data for the profiling, similar things might creep in. So it's always better, whatever may be the privacy policy or the data retention policy, you should know the limit of what needs to be Googled or what needs to be chat G P T'd, Googled, chat G P T'd. So I, I would say that, so that is something which we have to see. And please go to the chat G P T, go to the settings and by default, the chat setting, the chat setting will have the chat history on. Please switch it off, please switch it off. So you have the settings in the bottom, go there and if you click on the chat history, it will always be on, please switch it off. So that will be better, like it will not be saved anywhere, right? Yeah, that's something which we have to see. And when we discuss lot many points like this will creep on.
So, ma'am, any perspective you want to throw on auditors' privity with the client? Because now let's say we are using a license tool, we are using something in-house for assignment or for an audit. What is our responsibilities there? Does it differ when we use open A I, it's more like another team member now? So any points on that?
See, when we talk about privity of information, obviously the auditor has all access to past data as well as projections in the course of his work. And equally importantly, so they're normally typically auditor is considered conservator and they are very risk covers, they are very careful with things, they take the most extreme conservative approach. But then they also work with a team which is most young.
Yes.
The latest generation, Gen Z and if there is any other alphabet that we can find out after that, that's the. And they are not going to wait for all these conservative approach and all that, that is all in audit. But when I do my work, I will spend the minimum time that I can and I want maximum productivity. So if you tell them to use it, then we'll have to regulate how we work, work around that. And if you tell them not to use it, they are still going to use it. There's no two ways about that. So from an audit perspective, considering client confidentiality and litigation, all those kind of professional risks that we have to carry, we have to be very careful about how do we embrace this change. There is no way we can change the behavior pattern of youngsters that are going to come and it's going to get even more, more widespread adoption is going to be there. So we have to embrace it, but we can regulate how the change is adopted. We can, we can take the necessary precautions as to how to ensure that the risk of any leak, data leak, et cetera, is minimized because something wrong is going to happen at some point of time. So one is risk avoidance, one, another is change management and third is risk mitigation. That's how I would like to look at it. So the first and foremost thing that we'll, I will be looking at is limit access to data. Obviously, there is an audit plan, team, team members, members are given to a particular audit. So make sure that access to data is given only to that team, only for a defined period, that is the audit plan period. That will be the most simplest, that can be any advanced technology, but nothing works like prevention of access to data. That is the first and foremost. Then we'll have to make sure that the, we can use for S O P generation, writing sick leave, making a general inquiry, we can use chat G P T, there is no harm to it. But you step into office, we'll have to give them a channel secure communication layer. They should be able to access data only through that channel which is secure. Then there cannot be any risk about how the personal behavior is, will not impact professional work that is being done. That's a, that's a certainly an important thing, thing that we can do. And with today's bandwidth, it's very easily possible to secure the channel of communication. And equally important, the data has to be encrypted. We, these technologies have been long in existence, we have to adopt it far more diligently that data at rest and data in movement, when it is being sent out to any recipient is encrypted properly. Then the, as much as chat G P T makes our life easier, it also complicates. Now we, the cyber attacks that we have not only target A I tools, but they also use A I tools to be able to penetrate into our sensitive data. So we have to be wary of that and use the time-tested behavior patterns to do any risk aversion. These are simple, straightforward, proven techniques that we can do. There are some more, maybe in another context, I'll be able to tell that.
Ma'am, so you are trying to tell like we need to have some S O Ps implemented in the organization on how?
Which is cyber risk management is what we need to do at a very fundamental behavior level that becomes a part and parcel of our professional behavior in the first place. That's how I would like to start.
Technically and social engineering wise, both technically and social engineering wise. See, some, some organizations come forward and say that, no, it's very expensive tool, so I can't afford it. But sometimes, you know, it goes on a wrong way, so.
And now with the cloud tools that are being available, we can, we, the security measures that are to be taken are not so.
Expensive.
Expensive also, it's very affordable to everyone.
So those kind of aspects has to be taken by any organizations. And one more thing I was just trying to say is that even if you are using the chat G P T for your personal use, right? So keep your software updated, keep your antivirus updated. So many of us do that mistake, right? Keep yourself updated. If it is an organization, have your V A P T done on time, which is vulnerability assessment is done on time. So these are.
Apply the latest security patches.
Patches is very important, patch, applying patches both personally and organization wise, it is very important. So all these things will definitely be, you know, eye opener for anyone because we cannot avoid advancement in technology and that's a part and parcel of, right? After ten, fifteen years, I don't know what is her age, she looks very young, the chudida, black chudida. So I don't know, as I was telling that, eighties, so I took a wrong example. Anyone from two thousand ninety-nine, please, please. We were talking about the M C, how tall she is, right? Right? So the madam M C will actually say that, oh, chat G P T, it's my part and parcel of my life. Just as we are saying Google, right? So, so that's how it is going to be. So looking at sir, definitely a computer would have been, would not have been a part and parcel of life. For us, read if, I don't know whether you know read if mails and other things, right? So. Right?
V S N L mail.
Yeah, yeah, that and all.
We also know Lotus one, two, three.
Lotus one, two, three. So all those become, has become a history. Now chat G P T is going to be the future. So it's not only chat G P T, anything. And any, when, when the advancement comes in, all these hacking mechanisms and other things will creep in. So definitely as madam said, the risk management and our information security framework in an organization or at home is going to protect you and make use of the best from the advancement that we have.
So since we are talking about the technical framework to be implemented in our organizations, I thought we'll touch upon the technical framework of chat G P T. Like is it possible for someone to sit, feed in information and make the algorithm give some biased results or wrong results? Is it possible? Because it's going to work based on the input.
See, that's, that has come as one pros and cons list, if you see, no, that has come as one disadvantage where the hackers will be the person who can do, you know, manipulations of all this. Like, you know, when all these things came, no, the people were very afraid of doing a phishing. If you cleanly see the phishing mails, right? The phishing mails will definitely contain some English grammars and grammatical thing. But people are so afraid that, you know, after chat G P T, what will happen? But even Sundar Pichai has given that help me write mail, but I don't know why people have not been using this and why people are so crazy to use chat G P T. So maybe it, it gives you the answer along with the, you know, mistakes and everything. So definitely it is possible to, you know, infringement and other things is possible. But as I told that a risk, information security management and as ma'am touched upon and she will touch upon as well, with all those things, it can be avoided, right?
Actually, to add on to that, since the specific question of yours, say, I am giving a prompt in chat G P T for a particular question. I am getting an answer. The same answer may not be given if you are giving a prompt. The thing is, it depends on the kind of prompt that you give and the additional information you give along with the prompt. So it is not like I get the same kind of answer or same kind of information for a particular question. It differs with the kind of prompt and the additions you give. So one thing as ma'am was telling, say now we have like lot of hacking taking place. So it is very, very vital that you apply the patches, update the system on a day-to-day basis, put strong antivirus. Now even the password policy has changed. So previously we had a strong password policy. Now the password policy itself is being changed with something. Actually, it has gone to the next level called as pass phrase. It is not password, it is pass phrase. You give a sentence so that nobody will be able to replicate that particular sentence. So password itself has been replaced by a pass phrase now. So in that, even for a hacker, say suppose I am a hacker, I can actually get a code from chat G P T and try a hack in any particular entity. So even this is like, not even, they, they won't be even able to know from where this hack has happened. So if you see like for the past one year, the ransomware attacks in India, it's like very, very alarming. So many ransomware attacks and the areas where it has happened even include the aims. So Tata, Aim, so we, everywhere, we, actually these areas where this ransomware attack happened, actually when I saw the list, it was quite alarming. So all those big entities where they have the topmost safeguards, they have these kind of attacks coming up. So I think with this, still it can increase, but that doesn't mean it is only a con with respect to chat G P T. It is again depending on what kind of data you feed in, how sensitive is the data, how well your prompts are. So if you are giving a well-defined prompt, of course, you can protect yourself.
Yeah, yeah. And the Gartner report has also told that, you know, it is ninety-two percent of all these incidents have been, happened because of the ransomware and everything has happened because of the employee awareness. So in one or the other way, no, we are knowingly, see, for example, you, you are getting an email, right? You are getting an email from chat G P T, from chat G P T, open A I itself and saying that you please click on this. For this month alone, you will be getting a free subscription for the four-point zero series. Obviously, as a human being, we will be more interested in knowing it, right? But if you just cleanly check the, you know, the, you know, the link that is being given and everything, there will be some way in which it has to be, it, it would be, you know, misinterpreted or it will be, there will be a spelling change or anything. So the first thing that you have to understand and you have to make the people aware is that, don't click on such phishing mails, that is some, one kind of awareness because that is a cause of the reason for many things. And other things like in most of the banks and all happens, if, if you can block such mails at all, you will not have the mails delivered to your employees' email accounts if it is not from a genuine thing or if it is from an unknown thing. See, example, we actually triggered the customer C set for the important banks in U S, okay? And when it goes from a common email ID, it will get blocked. See, that's the level of security that they have implemented, right? So certain kind of things, certain implementation of the security consideration, every organization will have a varied information security or privacy framework defined and we cannot define it because it, it depends on the business that you do. If it is with respect to medical, it will be even more safe. If it is with respect to finance, it will be more safe. Of course, you all are belonging to finance, so finance obviously, right? So these are all the small, small things you can creep in and then you can get an advantage. So with the best, when, when the delivery managers and everyone in one of the company came and told me that this is going to be banned, I said, no, this chat G P T cannot be banned, learning cannot be banned. But at the same time, all the respective measures can be taken to avoid such things. See, obviously, when you go out, there is a lot of threat that you will be looted. Does it mean that you don't go out, right? You will go out, of course. And there are lot of things, a lot of things which we say that, even my mommy was asking today, her taniya va pora means, are you going alone, kya, yo, yo? So does it mean that we can't go out? We have the S O S app and then I was keeping, talking to my husband also. It's all the measures that you take.
Yes, ma'am.
That will be very context-specific. If it is social messaging, so in a social context, it's up to me to figure out how do I want to phrase my output. So if I have a particular preference, obviously it's going to learn that this is how I am looking at it and a bias creeps in. And the bias, it's not necessarily negative. It is, in another way, it's a customization. It understands my preference and goes in a particular way. So if I want a very neutral topic, then like she said, we have to be, like we have Microsoft Office skills. We'll now have to start getting prompt writing skills. So up to that. So we can't go on a first draft, we may have to try different methods and then do. Equally, there is also this deep hacking that she was talking about. So we have to be, we have to also think counter-intuitively. Chat G P T and any of these skills, tools are not going to take away the thinking process. We cannot simply adapt whatever comes out as an output of chat G P T, we still need to apply. There is no taking away a thinking process. That's how I will make it a little D-layered, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So to summarize, I think if we have the preventive measures taken currently, like let's say we are going to have a S O P on how we are going to handle this into our profession, what type of security measures we have to take before using chat G P T and how counter-intuitive we should be in order to get correct results. So if you are going to follow this, I am sure this is going to be a very, very useful technology. But here I think this is, though we are saying it's a useful technology, it's a disruptive technology. Like let's say, as Rekha ma'am rightly pointed out, we can write S O Ps with chat G P T. But if we can write S O Ps with chat G P T, client will write it himself, he is not going to come to us. So it's going to be a very disruptive era. Let's say next, I'll not say even a decade, next one or two years itself, there are going to be lot of disruption in our professional areas. So I am just opening this question to the panel. What all areas do you think that in our professional practice or from a consulting, information technology perspective will be replaced by chat G P T?
I'll just take the example that is given by Yudhipika with respect to S O Ps. Okay. So since I am getting the S O P ready-made from a chat G P T, will the client replace me? So that I have this one point is very, very critical. There are certain jobs which is going to be replaced by A I. But there are certain jobs which will be actually augmenting the human intelligence. Say for example, our profession, accounting or being it a lawyer or being for medicine, any field. So here, when I am giving an S O P, a prompt, like creating an S O P in chat G P T, it gives me an S O P. But it is for me to verify the correctness of the S O P. It is not that I take the S O P blindly and then do a copy paste and then work on it. But I need to customize as per my needs, maybe it might give me a customized result also. But depending on the situation, the kind of audit. But depending on the situation, the kind of audit I am, depending on the clientele, depending on the other situations prevailing, I can customize. So there is always a point of human indifference. So people might think like, okay, once this Chat G P T or A I comes, it is going to completely replace humans. No, there are certain jobs, say for example, jobs which involve very mundane task or repetitive task, like for example, customer care. Those things can be replaced by Chat G P T. Say for example, you have this e-commerce invoice raising or billing or even telemarketing, social media marketing, which involves mostly mundane and very repetitive tasks. So these can be replaced by Chat G P T or any A I tool that comes in the future. But if you see, there are others which actually requires some kind of a human indifference. So I don't think that is going to be completely replacing humans. So it is like, you are the decision-maker at the end of the day. They are giving you information which you have to use your cognitive ability to see whether it is right or wrong. Sometimes Chat G P T can even bluff. See, if you are giving an incorrect prompt, it can give you a totally different answer and if you are going to rely on that, it can make your life very troublesome. So it is depending on the kind of prompt, the customized prompt that you give. And always there is a element of human indifference. I think this, most of you might have seen this movie called, I think, Chitti, what is the name? Robo, right?
Ah, yeah.
Robo, so, yeah, so Endiren. So in that movie, I think he is able to manipulate almost all, all the tasks with respect, with the help of a robot. But when it comes to certain areas which requires human indifference or feeling, still it is at the very native stage. So when we talk about this, we have like two different kinds of A I. One is a very, very weak A I, one is a very strong A I. The stronger generalized A I is actually in the phase, it is still under research phase. When it comes to a weak A I, say for example, it can practically design or give answers to whatever command you do. Say that is, we already have this Alexa, Siri and all voice-assisted gadgets. Now we have actually come past that particular era, we are moving on to a Chat G P T era. So now here, if you see, there is yet another kind of A I called as a very strong A I. Say for example, a self-driven car. In case of a self-driven car, there is no one, there is no kind of human indifference. Absolutely, it is being driven on its own. Now the challenge here is, who will take the liability if it meets with an accident? I can't take the, there is no one actually driving. So where is the liability coming from? Say in case of hackers also, they are able to get a ready-made call, say phishing attack or whatever be the kind of attack. Who is going to claim the liability or who can be sued for that? So all these questions are to be answered. So I think there are areas which require human indifference. At the same time, there are areas which can be completely taken over by A I.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll have a perspective to it. It's going to take people, Chat G P T is going to take away all the work that is repetitive and where only a few steps of thinking are involved. So really discerning thinking will have to be done by people. So in all facets of life, the first few steps of thinking that we do, before we start thinking what are the options available, those areas will be taken away by Chat G P T in all facets. Even if it is a simple item like in the accounting profession, if it's about reading an invoice, you will feed in all the data fields by doing an O C R recognition tool. After that, you'll only check that the classification of categorization and classification is correct. That checking will be done by a human, it doesn't take it out, but all this automation in all facets of life will be taken away. Same with audit, instead of a time when somebody sits and takes out sample, I guess now you will start telling, feeding the data and say, you pick up the transactions. So wherever thinking can be minimized, that we will do with these tools.
Yes, ma'am.
So see, in any part of the life, I, I do not think that any technology can, you know, replace human thinking. See, in two thousand, when I did my computer science and engineering, right? So my father came and told me, I said, no dad, I want to take electronics and communication. No, 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 Kavi, the computer science is going to come and it is going to evolve. Everyone is going to get a job only in computer science. Is it true now? After twenty decades, I, I'm thinking that I would have done C A, right? Because now everyone is doing C A. My mate's son is doing C A, everyone is doing C A. In a particular, um, see, seriously, I'm telling you, like my friend's daughter has got an eighty-seven percentage of marks and then they said that M C C, she wanted to do B coms. Then the madam is saying, no, 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 for M C C to get an admission in B com, it requires at least ninety-two percentage. Please go and do engineering, no? Heartbroken. What am I doing even now, right? So someone told me that at forty, someone did the C A. Correct. And the Galat Engineering value just.
Yes, ma'am.
That, ma'am. So someone was telling me that at forty also you can do C A. Then I was thinking, okay, let me complete my Ph D and then start doing the C A, right? So yeah, I was fascinated by the people over here. Is it? Ah, yeah, true, true. So according to me, nothing is going to replace the human intervention. But definitely, these technology actually help us. See, you are using, all of us use credit card. Even if it is an eighteen-year-old boy or an eighty-year-old man, they are having a credit card. And all this A I, the pattern recognition and the behavior analysis and all can be used for fraud detection. So why are we not thinking on the positive aspect? It is not going to replace a human, it is going to replace some of the activities which can be generated or could not be generated by a human being. Will you be able to sit throughout the night and see that who's going to do a fraud accounting in a Citibank credit card? No, it is not possible. Suddenly, a call came to my father's account saying that someone is going to, someone is repeatedly asking your O T P. This would not have been possible without the support of an A I, because the A I actually reads the pattern. It reads the behavior. So why are we thinking that it is going to replace? It is going to replace the advancement which is going to come out of it. So in hundred percent, nothing is going to replace actually the human thinking. The, all these things can be used for the better thing. See, when I was doing, when I started my Ph D, no, then everyone, I mean, I was doing lot of literature survey. Then someone told me, Kavita, why are you doing all this manually? Please use this technique, no? Because N L P you use for document analysis. So you give all these things and then said, all these things are very much necessary for Ph D. This would not, would not have been possible for twenty years. Now it is okay, okay. I can do my work and at the same time, I can do a literature survey having hundred, two hundred. So my first D C meeting was like, you know, I was appreciated. Then I was thinking, hey, I used N L P for this document analysis, right? So it will not replace, but at the same time, it is going to help you out, provided you take the appropriate measures in doing this activity. See, lot of litigations is also associated when you are searching some things and all. And you will be, you know, you may have to respond to all those litigations if you use the data very wrongly. So only thing is that, right usage and right thinking of a human being will support this.
In my view, no, from the corporate side, business side, things may not change as fast as it will change in the way an individual behavior will change. When Covid struck, the timing in which we, people worked changed significantly. They changed, worked all the time. When the stock market was open, they were doing there. Now with Chat G P T, everybody will be a stock trader and they don't need to think too much. They'll keep feeding in, look at what is the trend, all micromanagement, stock trading will happen. Until they bite dust and then say, no, no, I burnt my fingers, come out. Certainly, that change is going to happen. And people who don't adopt technology.
See, all the mundane tasks can be automated, right? So for example, you know, even in our organizations, like we have to do a lot of desktop audits.
Even all complicated stuff.
Yeah, all complicated. Why do to have a desktop audit, doing a human doing this? Anyway, we are going to see others' desktop and say that what is it? All this can be done.
Excel has been there for so many decades. We don't use any of those features because it's too complicated. I have to remember so many formula, we don't want to, all that, now we will ask Chat G P T to do for us.
See, macros are also being given, little bit okay, like.
We use our tools better, we will use Microsoft so much better.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, as a layman, I'm asking this question. Now we have spoken about different algorithm, different A I-based tools, R P A, we are talking about automation, et cetera. What do you think is the difference between this G P T algorithm and normal M L A I algorithms, products which are already there? I think when we talk.
Technically, we have not done any analysis on how it is going to be varied. See, all the machine lang, machine language and this A I actually has three ingredient. Especially, our Chat G P T has three ingredients. One is the pre-learned module or the algorithm which is being keyed in. And, and then there is comes the supervisory learning, that is you key in something and then you supervise it, whether it is giving correct or wrong. And then there is a reinforcement learning which is actually based on the, you know, the feedback which it gets from the customer. And if you see Chat Sonic or Baj or any other Chat G P T kind of Open A I, that also has these component. And every component actually varies. And that's why when people say that I'm going to integrate the A P I which is given, I mean, third, third column of it has an Open A I interface. So all these things, when it comes to the respective organization which is actually giving the output of this A I, has the varied algorithms that is being inserted. And that algorithm definitely we will not understand, because when I was, I'm doing my Ph D in that and then every algorithm varies and that's why my Ph D is going to be standing different. Because when my H D was telling me that, Kavita, try to complete in two and a half years. Then I said, by the time I complete, on the eighth month, you will say that someone else has done it. On the tenth month, they will say that someone else has done it, right? So that is the variation which with it comes. So technically, we will not be able to much say, I, I don't know about Shovna ma'am or Rekamam. Technically, if you say what is the difference between this, so it all depends on the basic set. But the, the supersonic learning which is being imparted in this Open A I tool of G P T is much more enhanced and the learning is much more better than the other Open A I tools. Open A I, because my team also, I mean, there is one team in our organization which actually works for R P A and data analytics. And they also work on A I M L for various fraud detection or, we give it as a service as well. So it all depends on the algorithm and the learning or the, you know, there are a lot of, you know, I, I don't know how to say. See, there is K neighborhood algorithm, there is K algorithm, there is near hood algorithm, so many algorithms are there. How it is being used technically and how it is going to be embedded in your system varies from company to company. Best thing is that, it should give the app the response and that's what is seen in this Chat, Chat G P T.
I'll give a slightly different shade to it. A I and M L has been there for a long time.
Yes.
And we have, I come from the life sciences sector, we are early adopters of this. It improves productivity significantly. But in the way it has been applied in Chat G P T, it's very contextual to today's need and today's time. And it has a universal appeal that is not commercial, really commercial. Incidentally, it is used commercially. This is about how individual behaviors have been tweaked, the natural language learning that has been imbued in this. The typical A I M L tool that we have used in the corporate sector have been for specific purposes on very domain-ish areas where there is significant, so significant productivity improvements, but which doesn't come in the social engineering area. So therefore, there is a fair element of hype about the Chat G P T also. After all, it's a Microsoft investee, the amount and the time and the profile is high-profile. But in terms of the impact on productivity, all A I tools with the same risks and the same time will have impact. So I would think we should acknowledge there is a time, social engineering and investor hype that is involved here also.
Digital marketing.
Yes, it's certainly a part of it.
At least acknowledge.
Adan Deepika, if it is going live, please give it to Sam, Greg and all and say that we are.
Propagating.
Propagating.
Sure, ma'am. So since we have spoke about the algorithm and how it is applied and all, any specific tools that have already embedded Open A I or such A I tool? Because I saw a lot of things in, simple things like this code development or website development. There and all, I saw a lot of things where you have to just input how you want your website and it will throw template, you directly host it, something like that I saw. Like that on a professional sphere or on an entity, organization perspective, any application or anything you want to add, so that our participants can use it.
See, that's what I said, right? See, there are two aspect to it. One is that you want to develop your own with using the Open A I, you know, the Chat G P T also gives Open A P Is. So A P I is a gateway where you can connect to technical solutions, of course, you know that. So there are a lot of, not only Chat G P T, there are a lot of other Open A I tools which is available, which can be actually tuned to your, I mean, those A P Is can be adopted and you can tune it to your, you know, what to say, your requirement. So we are actually working on some of the chatbots and other things, based on some, you know, pattern behavior, depending on the different verticals that we are working, like we have B F S, we have retail, we have e-commerce. So it all depends on what is your requirement and how the A P I can be used. So when you are using that A P I, not only Chat G P T, other A P Is also, there'll be a team who has to actually follow the risk management framework which I, which we told about, right? It should not be weak enough, it should be trusted partner. What is that, is there a support, like if you are using an A P I? Is there a support that is provided? Is it trusted? Can you use it? So all those things has to be done and then it has to be tuned to your activity. So when you say, like all the C As are there, so it will be more on the S O P writing, audit writing. And when it comes to our organization, we, we will say that it will be cybersecurity, risk detection, incident management. Anything going out has a behavioral pattern. So it depends on that. So the A P Is can definitely be used, Deepika, but you, your organization should have your requirement and your organization should have the standard, you know, framework, risk management framework and policy. Because institutions, institution it varies, auditing it varies, financial institutions it varies, life science it varies, pharma it varies. So definitely, there are a lot of Open A I tools, not Open A I alone. There are a lot of A P Is for A I which is available in the market, which you can ask your network team to really, you know, go through and then suggest you for this, right? So we are also working on a behavioral chatbot and we are working on various, Microsoft project also has the A P Is. Many inbuilt, you know, mechanisms, A P Is or mechanisms it has, we are not exploring. So it all depends on your exploration and your need. Maybe I just want to add few points into this. So while, I mean, I was just browsing initial days like when Chat G P T came. So I was just thinking, is there anything beyond this, like as the topic of this panel discussion? So I just found few tools, actually, I mean, I don't know how useful it will be for your day-to-day professional aspect, but there are a few tools, like for example, the one that was like Google Bard. I think Google Bard is a quite a famous one now. So but there are, like if you compare Chat G P T and Google Bard, there are quite a few differences. Because in Chat G P T, we don't have this option of voice prompt. We have to literally put a text and then give, get an output. So in Google Bard, if you see, you have this option of voice prompt, which is actually very, very welcome move. Thing is, actually, I have a son. So when he was like around two, three, maybe four years, I used to see him search very actively in Google. And then the thing I was happy about is, oh my God, he has learned the spellings, he knows to type. And then one day, finally, all these, say cartoons or whatever it is, he is able to get access to all that and then at least he is learning the spellings by that way, I, okay, find one, I'm relieved of one thing. Then finally, I understood this guy is not actually typing, he is giving a voice prompt. He is giving a voice prompt, telling them and then he is getting the required output. Okay, then I thought, okay, I am much more, I think I have to advance myself. So I didn't even think of this. Just a five-year-old kid understood like, okay, voice prompt is there, you can use that without even learning any spellings, you can still get the output you want.
See, my two-and-a-half-year-old son actually uses the remote to say, Kannanakannay song podu. And Kannanakannay song will play, right? So that's the way of.
And I think this is like one area and even if you see that Google Bard, you have this option of directly accessing, attaching it to Gmail. I think in Chat G P T, we don't have that particular option. Say the kind of prompt you give, you will get the answers to it or solution to it, but you don't have an option of attaching it to a domain or Gmail. And similarly, I get to know this particular tool called as Auto G P T. It is a different one, Auto G P T. Then I was wondering, okay, Lummy G P T, what is this Auto G P T all about? So I just tried the same query in both the domains. And say for example, just I want to find a good location, arranged a birthday for my kid. So I want all the arrangements, whatever has to be done for organizing a birthday, please give me the inputs. Now the same output, whatever output this Chat G P T gave me and whatever output this other tool called Auto G P T gave me, actually differ in few aspects. Say for example, Chat G P T, if I've put, it showed me the possible venues in and around my particular locality. The people to whom I can include in the invite list, maybe I would have given some personal data before. So from that, it does pick few details of people who you can include in that particular birthday list. The type of gift and return gift you can actually purchase for the kids who are coming to that. What is the kind of cat dress you can choose? And what are the kind of dishes and desserts that you can order for the particular birthday and decorations and all the things? Now I gave the same kind of prop to Auto G P T. Now what it did is, it went one level higher. Actually, instead of showing me the particular list of vendors, it showed me the list of vendors, also the list of vendors in that particular locality, which one is the most cost-effective vendor, the one with the highest rating and why I should go and choose that particular vendor. It gave me a very well-refined result, that instead of ten option, I can actually narrow down to one particular option. And similarly, when I asked for the list of invitees, it is actually giving me a list of invitees and how it can mail. Say further means it can actually access the internet and even do a mailing, compose a mailing list and do. So it is actually comparing or doing the next level of what G P T can do. So it is not actually accessing the internet if you see chat G P T. It has a set of recorded data and it chooses from the recorded data and gives you an output. But here on real time, it can actually access the internet and give you a more customized result. Similarly, we have this Jasperas, Jasperat, it's an A I. So say I am giving some specific prompt, say I want a blue-eyed teddy bear. It is actually giving me a picture of that particular prompt which I, which I am giving. Say for example, if I want to get a video also, I am giving a specific list of prompts, it is actually giving me a video. And similarly, we have synthesize, we have write, all these are A I tools for specific purposes. It may be for writing, it may be for, it may be video editing, it may be for generating pictures. So I think it's high time that we move ahead of chat G P T because the only thing we know is chat G P T. Everywhere we have this particular thing, but there are N number of tools in the market and most specialized one actually, most specialized compared to chat G P T.
Paid ones are also there, like Copilot, then Copilot is free one.
You can use the mic ma'am.
Co-sonic and then Jasper A I, so these are some of the paid tools. So you can see that, but very nicely written, I don't know who has prepared this. Uh, see, it says that A I will not replace people, people with A I will replace people. That's what is true. Yeah, definitely we all are not going to be replaced. So we with the knowledge of A I is going to be replaced and that's the need of the art that you have to get yourself acquainted with all these terminologies. So the paid ones are good, Deepika, because my teams are using that for the A P Is and especially banks.
You want to add?
Actually, it removes the robot out of a human. So if you ask me, as ma'am was telling, it actually removes the robot out of a human. So when whatever task we were doing purely mechanical repetitive, actually that is getting removed. So I think that is one area, like it's a blessing for us. So tomorrow if it is actually overcoming or maybe doing tasks which we can already do, then it is a threat. But definitely requires some indifference from the part of humans, so in that way we are lucky.
I think now we will give opportunity for the participants to throw some questions if they have. Am I just any? Yeah, Varsham, yeah, we will give. Anyone? Thanks. Narayana.
Hello. Thanks to everyone, I think it's a wonderful discussion. So as I've gathered from whatever is discussed, right? What then is the fear? If it is very similar to Google search or any other, you know, browser search, should I be scared? I mean, that's the first question, scared in a positive, negative way, whether it will replace me, whatever. What then is the fear? Why should there be fear? If it is just going to be another technology and it can replace mundane tasks and whatever. And as Shobhna ma'am said, you know, Excel has come a long time back. So if the auditors then would have been scared of spreadsheets and all that, we are all very comfortable. Should I be scared? And how different is it from a regular browser internet era?
I'll just have a simple answer to that. We don't need to be scared, we need to be alert. Any change until we are comfortable makes us uncomfortable and that we call it fear. Whereas if we replace the word fear with alertness, it makes us, it eases up everything. But one thing different about the A I part of it is that there is so much of deep fake information that comes in, deep fake news which is alarming. Unless we are extremely alert, we may miss the ability to figure out what is correct and what is not correct. Today is an age of fake news, deep fake news, miss. You recently heard, right? One of the ads that has Sachin Tendulkar promoting something is a deep fake. It is not his hand or it is not his. So if you look at the top five most dangerous cyber attacks, it's all involving voice cam. Voice cam is coming out of artificial intelligence only. Eighty-three percent of people on whom voice cam attacks have been, they have been victim, they have lost money. And that, and I have told something like if you give three minutes of voice to an A I tool, then it generates a voice replicate, replicated some message which is seventy-five percent accurate, accurate or something. And if you train it, it goes to ninety-five percent accuracy. So this is not a time when we need, there's no point in being afraid because this is here to stay. There's no point in being afraid, we just need to be alert constantly. We, our brains need to be working all the time, that is where it is. Fear doesn't help us, that's how I would say that.
Uh, just to add on to it sir, like as ma'am was telling, like to be very, very careful while using that. Also, one more point where I would like to add is, it is not something to be scared of, but it is high time we embrace it. So the earlier we embrace it, we start using A I, then it is good for us. But the moment we are not embracing it or embracing the new technology, in no time it will replace humans. So a person as ma'am was telling, a person or human with A I can replace a human, yes, that's the situation here.
Some of the changes you were asking, right? The Google and the chat G P T. So the difference is that Google makes you think, it will only give you, it is a search engine which actually gives you where it is, right? Chat G P T doesn't analytical thinking and then it produces a output, so that the difference. And as ma'am said, you don't have to be, you know, afraid of. Uh, and see, it's a basic human nature to be afraid when we are going to accept a new thing. When you get married, oh my God, husband, wife. And then when you have a child, oh mama, papa. So we are all afraid of the things. The only thing is we have to just take it and then move it forward. See, I, I can see a lot of benefits which is coming out of A I, that's what I would say because it has not replaced anyone. Over the years, I mean, in fact, we were so late to develop A I in this twenty years because when I was doing my engineering, at that time also the A I was there and people were making human emotions out of toys and all. And after twenty-three years, we have come to this phase. So I would say it's a slow marching, but let's see like what the thing happens. So everywhere, next, next advancement is coming up. So we can all love it. The only thing which I keep on saying both professionally and personally is that you should know what to, I mean, what to search for. And you should know your limit of giving your information. If someone is asking you that please give me your Aadhaar card and if you give it, no one can actually save you from getting, being fraudulent, right? So nothing to get fear out of all this is what I would say. Just enjoy the change, enjoy the usage, let, let, let us accept what is, you know, currently there in the market. Yeah.
Any other questions from the participants?
Never, never, never. And never in any field, I would say. See, people say that, you know, after this, only the people who are there in this computer field or anything has more work, no. Uh, and that's example of being in this lovely meeting where I still regret to be not a C A, right? So we never. Differentiated, right? So definitely that is it.
See, one more question we can take?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you so much ma'am for providing so much valuable informations. So I would like to ask that there are many people who resist adopting the new technologies. So I am also one of them only. So I, I, I'll tell you the reason that when I was in my articulship period. So when my principal used to ask any question, that whether suppose he is asking what are the companies on which internal audit is applicable? What I will do, I will go and Google it and give him the answer. So he will get very much irritated. So he will ask me, as a professional, you should be able to interpret the law. So every time I am asking you anything, you take the Book of Income Tax Act and Companies Act. From there you find the solution. And when, when actually I did that, so in finding answer of one question, I was able to find out the answer of more ten more questions. So one more example I'll take. One day I was trying to solve one financial management question, which was the calculating price of a call. So I spent more than fifteen minutes, I tried to get the formula, methods, examples and I calculated the answer. At the same time, my brother was there, he used the chat G P T and in one minute it gave the correct answer. So I am asking, and ma'am was saying that his son does not need to learn the spelling and my brother does not need to learn the formula. So whether we are doing it correct, why adopting the technologies?
Actually, this has two sides, okay? So I'll answer one from your perspective and one like how it can be used, okay? So in this way, there is something called as a restrictive questioning. Thing is, like you put in all the necessary prompt and you get a necessary ready-made answer. Actually, you in the long go, you are actually losing your drafting skills. Or maybe you are losing your ability to understand, comprehend and then search. And as you said, attend different website, I am looking, I am getting ten different inputs, ten different insights. But one, just one single paragraph it is providing, so actually I lose the ability to comprehend information or maybe how to research, do a research or properly draft a letter. But on the other hand, say in the initial beginning of this session, I told like for internal auditors, let us say for example, I am just using chat G P T and just asking, just provide me a checklist. Say for example, a procure-to-pay cycle. Provide me a checklist for a procure-to-pay cycle. Now it gives me a checklist, all the things that I have to do. See, starting from the invoice creation, invoice verification, the purchase order verification, the goods receipt note, reconciliation, reporting, compliance, everything. Now I get a set of inputs which I can readily use. Now as an article student, say for example, in your articulship days, if you had chat G P T. Say you get this ten different elements which you have to do for a procure-to-pay cycle. Now you have a doubt on what I have to exactly check under compliance. So you again give a question in chat G P T. Chat G P T, let me know what compliances I have to check. So it is already given compliance, reporting, disclosures has to be made. Now we are again checking or giving an input like what compliance I have to check. Now I have actually tried this, it give me a set of compliance. Say it could be the financial compliance, the legal compliance, the tax rates, whether tax is calculated properly, the ethical compliance, the contractual compliance for the company, say how it is getting billed, what is the time period, what is the credit period, whether it is complying to that, the environmental compliance, all this set of compliance, even I was not aware these many compliances are there until I saw that, okay? So all the compliances, now further I refine the question. Say how, what to verify in a purchase order? So for that also, it is giving me a set of answers like, say you need to have the particular vendor details. You need to have information about that particular product, what is the quantity, what is the pricing, what is the billing date? What is the location or when they have promised to give you, so all these details were there. Now again I went one step ahead and I said, what is the kind of reporting I have to do? And I also gave the financials of a particular company masking the company name. I didn't give the company name, I masked the company name and give the all the E P N L details for that particular balance sheet details. And then I asked chat G P T, I have given the financial details of a particular company, please analyze the balance sheet and give me the data. Actually, that is the only thing that I am supposed to do as an auditor, even I try to automate that also. So I try to automate that and trust me, within few second, it gave me a full-fledged analysis of the balance sheet. But I, I can't give the company name as there is some confidentiality, we are not supposed to give. But the moment I gave this particular prompt, it is giving a full-fledged analysis of the balance sheet. Now again went and asked one more prompt. Chat G P T, tell me which are the risky areas and what I should be concerned about? So now it started giving me all the ratios, the quick ratio, liquid, liquid ratio, all the ratios and gave me and tell me, okay, this company has a fund deficit, you have to concentrate on this particular area, so much debts. So it is all the areas. So I was literally surprised, then I went one step ahead and I asked him like, what, can you give me the R C M metrics in Excel? A risk control metrics, but that actually didn't work out. Then I thought, okay, I didn't leave it, still I wanted answer from that, so I put it as, give me the R C M metrics in a tabular form. Now finally it understood as a tabular form and it gave me in a tabular form. So I think when you were an article, you had so much of details. Uh, maybe it might hinder your ability to research at one point, but at the same time, you will be able to dig more within a short span of time. Within like say ten minutes, you can dig so much and you get specific answers. So I think it is all about how you use it. I mean, this is my personal perspective, maybe.
It is everyone's perspective like that. See, you said like, you know, your brother did it in one minute and you did it in some.
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. See, that's what, it is very clearly written, I was, I mean, I like this phrase very much. A I will not replace people, people with A I will replace. So, so the thing is that, see, your brother used it wise enough to find out the methods, okay? But the exact research of that, which your boss or someone said that you did not find it in the income tax book. See, all these Google search engines, chat G P T, they themselves declare it very clearly that we are only giving an intuitive way of doing it. It, it, it is, it can be a right answer, it cannot be a right answer or it can be a partially right answer. So the, you, it is, it is the responsibility of the human to, you know, do the research, type it and find it out the right things. So I think Rekha Mam is the one who has used the chat G P T, almost all the aspects, okay? And one thing that you have to learn from her is that chat G P T also will not give you the answers in one, one right way, right? If you have to do a kind of an analysis, she is actually using it in a very intelligent way to outsmart the chat G P T to get her work done. So right, so the thing is that you can use it, but the research and other capability lies within you only. See, her son can actually start using this whole A I to learn the words. But at the age of eighteen, if he is coming for a meeting like this and if he doesn't know what is supplement tool and can he go and ask the chat G P T? Please tell me, no, it cannot, right? So please use the chat G P T as an aiding tool, not as a replacement of, what's your name sir? Huh, what is the replacement of Sagar? Sagar, you are a sea man, so obviously dip, deep dive into it and then you will emerge as a winner, that's what.
One more quick question before we wind up. What do you think our regulators view on this A I algorithms and is there any regulation that we should be cautious about?
See, definitely there are regulations. Even our information, information technology had two thousand amendment in two thousand eight. And are all our privacy laws like G D P R, then C C P A and Privacy Manila Act, many, many acts are there, many regulations are there. All the regulations says that your data has to be safe enough. And as a provider, as a provider, even the V P N providers, there was a law which was raised by Modi that you have to have the data. So as a, as a provider, as a user, it is your responsibility to keep your data safe and at the same time, the others' data also safe. So since ma'am has used it very efficiently, she has also done an efficient task of masking the data, right? So and, and one more thing is that like when you do a copy paste, which we all like, right? When I was in college, people used to say, hey, echhi thotti otti de. So I, I mean, I, I really did not know Tamil much at that time. Ina echhi thotti otti de, what was it? Then people used to say, copy and paste. So the copy and paste, you, I mean, how well it is a tool, it is a command prompt, it is very, very dangerous. So the regulators will definitely levy heavy penalties on you. And this had been a case in many organization, I have seen personally, where you are being prompted to pay huge hefty amounts if your data actually gets leaked and especially by you. So all the legal teams and everything would be at the back of all this. So there are regulations and definitely as because I have done my cyber forensic and cyber law with National Law University. And one thing which all the laws and regulators keep on doing is that Metaverse, right? Is it an I P R? So, so all these things are there, as, as you grow faster with the technology, regulations also comes into the picture. Bitcoin, R B I never recognized, but at one time it said that pandu pandada vosh to, right? Whereas in the other organization, I, I know sir from banks, right? So the other country says that it is legal. So the regulations are there to make your data safe and make your users and providers' data safe as well. And we may have to definitely pay heavy penalties and compensation if the I P R or any such rights are violated during the course of all these good, good things acceptance.
Yeah, I think.
Almost become a history for me also madam. Because when I started writing my first exam for the P H D, the two days my hand was not usable at all. Because we have stopped writing, we have stopped.
Generations, it's almost completely.
At least maybe, but definitely, as I said, it will not replace, but to an extent it will come down is what I, I believe. Because first time when I wrote the law exam, half my law hand was broken. And when I write, wrote my first coursework in P H D, the entire hand is actually broken. Uh, but there are college students also, so definitely it is not going to replace the handwritten. So all my professors in Hindustan say that, no, no, no madam, handwritten assignment to be submitted to get the internal marks.
So Sriman Jam only will help us to keep our hands.
Sriman Jam, dur gaya ma, Jesus.
That only will help us to keep our hands perfect, yeah.
But anyways ma'am, like we are going in the path of the advancement, so the knowledge and the other things has to be embraced as we walk ahead. And as a human being, as a.
And as a human being, as a parent, as a brother, sibling, we have to make our generation at least write Sri Ram Jai or durgey amman or whatever it is. But definitely technology will change us and it is changing us. Earlier we all, we never had an Ola, we never had an Uber. So all these things have been changed, right? Now we don't even care about, hey, ulapodu, oye, Uberpodu, like that only we say, right? So we are advancing. Walking is not at all there in our life madam, right? Walking is not at all there in the life. Kashtapatta we walk for one hour and then we eat all the pizzas and pastries to add upon all those calories which have burned in the walking. So similarly, life will change, but still we have the tall girl who is so lean, right? So maybe we have to keep ourselves fit enough and use those technology to take our life forward.
Yes ma'am. Shobhanam, now we have so much news about ChatGPT passing C P A exam, ChatGPT passing C A exam. What do you think that?
It can pass C P A exam, difficult to pass C A exam.
So I think Madam is there representing.
It was not just a joke, it was not a just a joke because C P A is a objective question format. You can do permutation combination, something and it can learn. When you try multiple things, you learn something from it. C A format is a test of absorption and intelligence.
Yes, yes ma'am. Anything from future of generative A I? Like I think we have spoken a lot about it, but future of how this generative A I will be, any thoughts on that?
See, definitely there will be lot of mundane task and repetitive task which will be automated. Lot of predictive analysis will be done even in my team instead of taking more resources. I am not saying that we are not taking resources, we will take the resources. But at the same time, all the regular jobs can be automated. More work will be given on the predictions and analysis. See weather forecast, appala vandhi, we used to see the sun and say. Now we are all looking at the A C and saying that, hey, please go down to 16 so that we can beat the scorching heat of 42 or 43. I don't know what is a heat thing now. So obviously all these things will happen and there will be lot of fraud detections, we can use it because from the information security perspective, I am saying, there will be lot of tools which can be generated based on this. And there will be lot of, you know, you know, this N L P can be used for document analysis. There will be lot of, you know, data analysis for which we can use this pattern analysis, behavioral analysis. So these are the, all the things which is going to actually help us in doing it. See, for example, Mam was talking about the robo car. We need not completely automate a robo car, I mean car, but there are lot of things, you know, this auto mode, I know driving only with the auto mode.
Yes ma'am, me too.
You too, no? Right, so when I, me too is gone. I too solunga. So obviously, you know, there are lot of other things which is actually automated in the cars. So all these are related to the A Is and other things, no? So definitely I would say that there will be lot of scope for the A I, which will not replace human, but it will replace the people with the A I, definitely. So there are, there have been lot of huge markets outside who has actually gone down, like Philips is one thing, they were on the top, they did not change and they are gone. So likewise, if we are not changing or adapting to the latest technology.
We will be the disruption.
Ah ma'am, we will be the destruction, destructive, you know, mission for ourselves. So definitely it is going to be.
So I think our audience are not like that. We are having more questions, so they want the panel to keep going. So if you don't mind, we will take couple of more questions before we close. Yes ma'am.
Yeah, with your concluding remark on we, like we should not be the disruption. So I mean, I belong to an internal audit group. So how do we use ChatGPT in doing the internal audit? Like because my data privacy on one side, so how do I, you know, put data of my client and then use it, sorry? That's what I'm saying, so how will it help me?
You missed the first part of the panel.
Actually, I think is, I do a lot of, use a lot of ChatGPT in my day-to-day audits. Okay, so I think is you cannot, you have to keep the, maintain the confidentiality of the client, but that doesn't mean you are not making full use of ChatGPT also. So you can definitely take in, pull in the financial figures, get, say for example, even I want to draft a board report. So even I can give the context of the particular meeting, the agenda, I need not give the particular company name, but I can give all the other, the agenda of the meeting, like what is going to happen, all the things. And then I can ask them to even put a board report. It actually drafts a well-written board report. Now I am giving some prompts, now I don't want, I am very lazy enough to prepare a minutes of a meeting. So I have given the board meeting and now I am just giving some inputs and asking it to prepare a minutes of, that also it is actually doing, it's preparing a beautiful minutes of the meeting. So it is, thing is, how you are going to customize your prompt? Sometimes it may not give you any answer, but that doesn't mean if you customize the prompt, it can give you a well-defined answer. See the one I told about S O Ps, lot of S O Ps, the checklist, the points, Caro reporting, even Caro reporting also it gives. If you just put the financials, it gives a full-fledged Caro report. So I think more than this, I think we are half, more than 70, 75 percentage of the work itself is reduced now. So these are the main areas and as Mam was telling about the jobs which are going to be replaced. Now once we had the hype of this data analytics and business intelligence, so what everyone was like confused of what is business intelligence all about? So then there was a concept like it is actually helping you derive intelligence out of your business. Say we have a bunch of data, but we don't know how to utilize the data to derive information out of it. So especially for example, I can take the example of a communication industry, say any communication provider for that matter. So normally they give you all this post-paid, say especially if you go for a post-paid connection, they give you a lot of schemes, say five ninety-nine recharge, thousand rupees recharge with two G B data free, these many calls free, these many S M S free. Now how do you think they are coming up with these kind of schemes? It is basically they analyze the data, they take the data of a particular region, maybe gender-wise they filter it out, the time-wise they filter it out, what is the peak time they speak, they filter it out, then what is the maximum duration, minimum duration who speaks and that they correlate with the gender, they correlate with the place. So with all these kind of correlations, they come up with a business intelligence and depending on that particular report, they come up with the schemes. Now, I have this data, I do the filtering, I put it in any of the A I tools, I need not even have a data analytics tool. ChatGPT or any A I tool for that matter gives me a customized list of what or what schemes I can come up with.
I have a specific response to your question. One has to be very careful when you are using ChatGPT for the kind of work that you are saying. And I want to quote a specific instance that in the case of Samsung, it came up in the, it came up in the social media that some, someone gave a meeting transcript and asked ChatGPT to extract a meeting minutes, minutes of the meeting that got leaked out, that included sensitive information. There were three instances only with Samsung on usage of ChatGPT which led to data loss. So therefore Samsung, they had to totally ban use of ChatGPT in their organization. I am quoting this instance, but I want to go back to what I told in the beginning of the meeting, that if you want to use ChatGPT, make sure that you are using your exclusive server which is encrypted, where you are using a secure communication layer and you are able to delete the data immediately. And while doing, even in spite of all that, you have to anonymize your data before you are giving anything. With all these precautions, you will be able to give the full data, financial data and just pick, you don't need to pick up samples, you can pick up exactly what transactions you want to audit, typical transaction, atypical transaction, outlier, underlayer, everything you can choose, no sampling required, straight away you will get the answer. But take all these fundamental precautions very diligently and without any attention laps. If you want to multiply by two, please do that. If you want, certainly anonymize it, then you can use the tool. Not with, you cannot let your guard down while you are using ChatGPT in the course of your work. That, that cannot be underlined, that cannot be emphasized more. That's a serious question, so I thought I will give a serious answer. Thank you.
So I think as risk management professionals, before using ChatGPT, we have to do risk management for ourselves, ignore copy paste and do all indirect prompts, have our risk management in place and then I think we can start using ChatGPT. Yes, yes Deepika.
Good evening everyone. So just a question like since I am into indirect taxation, so I have to draft a lot of appeals or reply to the showcase notice. So if we take in, especially for income tax and indirect tax, G S T, we have to refer to so many sections. If it is just one transaction, we have to refer to one section, it goes on, when we refer supply, it goes on the time of supply, place of supply. So how well the ChatGPT will be useful in this to draft a reply? So I just wanted to understand whether we have to give all the sections details and then it will come as a reply or how it is going to be useful?
To be honest, I tried this.
Okay.
So I just gave a prompt and I asked like, I just want to draft a letter to the income tax commissioner for a particular client of mine who has been assessed with the wrong tax liability. So firstly drafted a very beautiful letter, very professional, I would have never imagined of drafting such a letter. Then I went and again gave a prompt, okay, the particular section under which I have got the notice is this and the amount of liability that was like different from what is supposed to be is this much. And as per my understanding, the areas where this excess tax would have been levied is because of the, maybe the T D S are already been deducted, but the assessment officer has overlooked it and it has again come as an assessment. Now maybe because of this, so now kindly provide me some case laws from Income Tax Act, which would be similar to this particular case scenario so that I can substantiate my letter. Actually it gave me a set of case laws similar to this kind of query, it is very, very customized. And all the case laws, when I actually referred, when I went and did a Google search, all the case laws that it have provided me was exactly similar to the condition I maintained. So I think I need not go and search for the case laws, only thing is that I have to improvise my query a bit, so as to get the right answer. So I think this letter drafting was over, case law selection was over and what exactly has to be done by the commissioner or by the department, I have also given a suggestion. Yes, you can, actually you can split the query into few many parts, like maybe once it gives a reply, I can still give a query like, from the query or response that you have given, could you regenerate a response based on these many circumstances? So it gives a very refined answer. Ah no sir, actually you can directly copy paste the financial, like say if it is in Excel or maybe in Excel also you can directly copy paste, it actually understands. So only thing is that you mask the particular company name, client details and all and you can give the other details. I actually used Excel for this purpose, it was in Excel and I used it, but it came out pretty well. No, I used a free version. I will only explore the free version and if it is like suitable, then I go for the paid version.
It's only, it's one day, one month, no? Like she will go for it, twenty dollars is okay, no? But one thing is that to add upon is that, as Mam said, it will give that, but it will give with the disclaimer that you have to actually do a research. So that, so that's what even for Sagar and everyone, it, it is actually aiding you find a response, which could have been a very, very tedious task for us to do if it is done manually, but it is your responsibility to get it corrected or verified. Cross-checking definitely it has to be done for any of the A I or the computer-generated answers and all, right? So that we have to do. Legal suits.
It's not just A I.
Disclaimer.
We are. See and also the patent analysis, the patent analysis, the data analysis and all, because we also do, we also have the data analytics team doing lot of work for the banks only. So seriously, I would say that the A I is really doing wonders and doing this at a. Okay, yeah, yeah, right.
Hi ma'am, I have a question. I am Vijay Saradi from Ashok Leyland. See these days what happened.
Karpati teri adhe.
Pardon?
Karpati, like teri adhe.
Kar, karilam, I am lari actually, we deal with buses and lorries. Fine, alright. See, these days what happens is the addition level killings us. What happens? Previously Google was not there, now we, what are, even in Google searches, we literally go and type Google and search. That is the kind of, I mean, Google search we do. So see if ChatGPT is the next one, I mean after Google, if we do lot of ChatGPT-based queries or directives, to what extent our datas will get protected, one thing. Number two, mergers and acquisitions will have a direct impact. Say we are using even, I mean, private domains like say X Y Z dot com, that also can be, I mean, added with through POP3 server in Gmail, we can add that. Say for example, X Y Z associates dot com, that can also be, I mean, communicated through Gmail, we can add it, integrate it. In case if Microsoft or Google suddenly buys or acquires a major stake in A I, what happens with the data, with the current data?
It's already invested sir.
Oh, that's, no, they have invested, one thing. Second thing, do we need to do any preventive controls in the existing system?
Preventive controls, that was we said Vijay, like for anything, not only for Google ChatGPT, for any of this new technology-related things, we should have a, you know, a preventive risk management framework, information security framework or social awareness framework or anything that we have.
No, you said about the retention policy, privacy policy, but beyond that.
That is, that is with respect to an individual doing all that, individual doing all that.
Okay.
When it comes to the mergers, or as I said, you know, in the OpenAI ChatGPT, you have the third column which actually talks about the open A P I, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Whenever we are using an open A P I, not only from OpenAI, anyway we are using an A P I from many companies or any other providers, I said, no, it's not only about the retention policy, we have to actually see what is the technology that is being used, where is that it is getting leaked? And if it is going to be hosted in the public, what are all the vulnerability that can, we can see? So there will be a network team who does all this. So the A P I has to be vetted by them and only then the feasibility can be checked upon to accept that in our organization. Otherwise we, we should not even do that, right? And some of the people actually fall prey to these hackers when they do it individually. See there are many people, especially the youngsters, who wants to actually do lot of experiment. And when they do that kind of experiment.
Exactly.
Without any feasibility, right? That's where they actually get into a trap. And when they actually get into a trap, they drag the whole company to get into the trap. That's what happens and it has happened in many organization, which I have known personally.
Exactly.
So that's why we say that data retention, privacy and all, it is okay with respect to an individual. But when it comes to an organization who is actually deriving all this to have something in their organization, it is very much necessary for them to do a feasibility study. When I say feasibility study, it involves everything, doing a feasibility on the network, whether the network is being very weak or how that weakness is being identified, if at all it is going to use our data and doing some activity, whether they are going to store the data in their website or, I mean, in their database or the data is going to be stored in my database only, or a copy of the data is going to be, going to fall into there, which we will never allow. Why should my data get, copy into your database? See, this has all happened in the companies which I know. See, when we do all this kind of, you know, acquisition, not acquisition, acquaintance with the different A P I providers, we actually get into a trap. That's why we say that we have to read their policy very clearly, that where are you residing? See, for example, if you take a G D P R, which is actually a legal suit, right? So it says that your, the personally identifiable information, which is of European Union's data, should not come out of E E A and if it comes, you should have all this. So suppose in our organization, there was one case where the server was actually placed in Bombay. So then we said, no, no, we don't want it Bombay because we've, actually we never noted it that it is in Bombay. We thought like, okay, the, all this acquisition or, oh sorry, acquaintance is happening via a company in U S, so the server is going to be in U S or it will be in Europe, European region. Then at last we found out that the server is going to be in Bombay, when we actually took it as a measure which we took to register the data, in the, register the whole B C R and the data protection office in Netherlands, right? Only then we found out that the server is in Bombay. Then we said, no, 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 it cannot be in Mumbai, you have to shift the server which I am going to use in any of the countries in European Union because my, that bank is not going to allow me. So Vijay, it is up to the company which is actually going to use, so you cannot take up any decision. That's why I say, when everyone came to me and said that the ChatGPT has to be banned, I said, no. But at the same time, what are the measures that can be added upon when we are actually using it has to be done. And that, for that, we have the information security team, we have the S O C, SOC monitoring team. And that, for that, we have the information security team, we have the S O C SOC monitoring team, we have a network monitoring team. So all these teams will actually help.
No, I, I agree with all the points, in fact you said that. But what I am talking about is the, the small and medium entrepreneurs, they are also using, they are also gonna use and they will, they don't, they generally don't have a dedicated I T or, I mean, such teams.
Right.
So what kind of, I mean.
See, there are lot of consultants, there are lot of information security consultant, there are lot of SOC consultants and as madam said, there are lot of open source tools which actually have the best. So they have to do a market analysis and then they have to do it.
So actually, just to answer your question, I think as madam told, we have to, like Reka madam mentioned, we have to mask our data, we should ensure that we are not giving sensitive information outside. So I think that's a risk management from our side than their side and further clarifications, I think we can take it offline as we are already overshot our time, yeah. So since it's going very extraordinary, maybe we can look for one more session in this topic in the coming. Yeah, maybe A I conference, we can have a one-day conference and have more deliberations and discussions on how we can do.
What is actually human, right? Based on the, see, based on, based on everyone's response, Deepika suddenly decided that it is going to be a conference. Now she will say it will be a paid conference, so which A I cannot do.
Yes, ma'am, our Institute of Internal Auditors is a nonprofit organization. This is I A A Awareness Month, we are spreading awareness about our institute.
There is some more certifications and all which we are talking about, no, this is a very good, see, that's what, see, I am promoting you for with respect to A I and human, right?
Excellently, I think we all had a very wonderful. No, 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 I am proposing you part of women's forum. Ma'am, C A is not a prerequisite, incidentally, C As are doing internal audit, but. Yes, seriously, if you are only a chartered accountant, you cannot be an internal auditor. So as sir told, we need lot of F A N I. Yeah, I think we had a very, very excellent interactive session. Please, thank you all for your excellent participation. Thank you all eminent personalities here today, all from management level who have taken time on a Friday evening to spend with us and share so much of knowledge in depth. I think even if we have Googled about chat G P T or asked chat G T about chat G P T, we wouldn't have got this much information. So as this program is part of I A Awareness Month, I request all non-members to please look for the membership in our institution and all the members, I think renewal is due in April, May. So if you have missed your renewal, we request you to renew, our registration desk people will support in renewals. And now I request Ridi and Rukmini ma'am from our I A Women's Forum, Secretary and Joint Secretary to honor our panelists with a small moment of from my A A. Thank you panelists and thank you Deepika, I am sure everybody would have enjoyed the session as much as I did. And I request Mister Ramkumar, Secretary, I A Madras to deliver the word of thanks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. See, if I have to sum up the whole session in two words, splendid session. See, it has kindled interest among all of us to learn something very new. And before I go to the panelists, I will have to, I have a curiosity to understand whether Deepika used chat G P T to generate questions. Because in these things, if you have to extract the best from the panelists, it is very important that you ask right kind of questions, okay? So I think that she did splendidly, yeah, marvelous this thing work, Deepika. Second is, you know, kudos to all the three superstars of the day, okay? Superstars need not be only men, they can be women, okay? So both Shobhna ma'am, Reka ma'am, as well as Kavita ma'am. They told us, if you really see what they told us, three basic themes. One is learning, okay? We have to learn, there is no escape from learning, till your last breath you have to learn. And only when you learn, you will know how to protect. Because business models are under disruption, business models are changing and there is a volatility. So if you have to protect yourself, the kind of safeguards that you need to build in is something which they were also saying that. Third is, you have to destroy ignorance, you have to destroy ignorance. You cannot have a rigid stand that I will not learn kind of a thing. In fact, I had a very interesting this thing less than a week back. A friend of my son, he was actually saying, he was only thirteen years old. Now actually he is now eighteen, he is yet to pass his twelfth, okay? He was giving me a lecture on digital marketing and so many things, okay? So we need to learn from those guys. So it is very important and I think from that point of view, today the takeaways for all of us are many. It has kindled lot of interest and we need to go back and try it out, that is more important, before we forget, before we forget. Second thing is, the Googles are the past, chat G P T is the present, we don't know what will come in the future, okay? But definitely we need to use artificial intelligence and any tool that comes in the way, okay? And make it to productive use. So, Hati, thanks to all of you, okay? It was, it was an excellent session, all of us learned a lot and on behalf of I A, I thank all the three of you for the time that you have spent and I should also thank the delegates and the V O G members for your participation in this session, thank you.
Thank you everyone for coming, I request you to raise for National Anthem. Thank you everyone, thank you for taking time off and attending the session, have a happy weekend.